If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would take a minute to make sure they silenced their cell phones so we're not interrupted.
Alright, so I'm going to move on to item 3A, which is a presentation from Mrs. Carter.
It's a very brief presentation. So I am going to show a video in a few minutes that will show you a culminating activity from one of our second graders. Her name is Genevieve Raytek.
Hold on one second. Do you need her to speak into the mic, Lucinda?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. My favorite. Good evening, how's everybody today? Our second graders were researching insects and I was able to see some of their end projects and I got really excited because it really was a culminating activity of what you as a board supported for us in our school district and particularly at the GLP. So our students use their iPads on a daily basis to do things like research, support their reading, support text, they do use them to do presentations. And what you're going to see today is an opportunity for one of our students who researched a housebee up there, which you can see in front of Mrs. Anzalone. And after she researched it, she created it. And she's going to tell you all about how she created it. And it's a student who has made tremendous growth in second grade this year. And after she did the research, she created a housebee. And she's going to tell you lots of things and specific details about it. And truly, this is what my favorite thing about education is in 21st century learning, is the fact that when you take the New York State Learning Standards, you take technology, you use our iPads, our one-to-one initiative, our students are able to research, they're able to share their knowledge in different ways. It's not about just pencil-paper tests. They can share through presentations, creating housebees. This student was able to create a presentation, videotape it, she was able to review it and edit and make changes with a partner, which is truly a life skill that they will use in their jobs, in their life. We've all done that when we were in college. We had perfected them, do better. She re-videowed it and worked along with her partners, her teachers. And it truly is a testament to what the district has done. The board has supported with technology, our iPads, our personalized learning initiatives. So no matter where our students come from, they're able to build on their strengths. We're doing a lot of STEAM activities and it really is a celebration of the learning. This was a culminating activity of science, ELA, writing, presentation skills. And I'm so excited to share Genevieve's project with you. And she's going to tell you all about it. And really make sure you listen to the very end because she was the first student who went in her class and she wished her students good luck who were presenting after her. So without further ado, please take a look at her presentation.
My name is Genevieve. My bug's, my bug's name is Lavender, but the type is, is a housebee. It eats cupcakes, it protects. It, bats eat them. It protects himself, like if, if a bat touches these, it will die and the spots all over it and the stripes. And if it gets in here, but like not, because they would sting it. But if it did, these stuff in the abdomen would shoot out poison at it. And this acts like umbrella to protect it from the sun, which I glued on to the antennas, which I used with hot glue. And, and I used toilet, a pa, a toilet paper roll to make the body, a cup to put for the abdomen, and a foam ball for the head. Another thing that will poison them is this clay, the spots on its head. Plus, something else I love about my bugs is that when they press the hearts, which the insects might think that they love you, though they'll touch them and make them die because it has poison spread all over them. And, and I named it the housebee because it lives in a house, but right now it lives in school. But sooner it will live in a glass case than a house. Finally, my name is Genevieve, the bug's name's Lavender. I made it a bug from toilet paper roll. And I hope you like my, um, bug. And I really do wish that it, for the every person, do as well as everyone would do.
Now, if you keep in mind, she's, she's only in second grade, but the things that you should have noticed was she really, when she started presenting, wasn't looking at her notes at all. She owned that information, she knew it. And she created it. So as she explained how she created it, she had to think about that. The creativity of thinking about how her bee's going to look, how am I going to create it, is really all about the STEAM process, which is why you hear us talk about things previously when we had some of our meetings of why it's important for our maker space. How do we use the technology? So we talk a lot about questions parents have about screen time. So this isn't the, what we use for screen time, so that students can present. She owned as much information presenting to you on this video as she would have possibly on a paper and test paper. The output doesn't have to be the same for all students, but they still own the information. And that's truly a celebration of English language arts, science, the foundation that little girl has because of the activities she did is just tremendous. And all of that work happened in her classroom, those projects were created in their classroom, the videos, the editing happened in their classrooms. It's truly an outstanding in, in for, environment and it's a true testament to Sandy West Rishel and the environment she creates in her classroom. So I hope you enjoyed the presentation. Again, I want to thank you for your support of everything we do at GLP to implement technology, personalized learning, the New York State Standards. And our students are soaring because of it, so we really thank you.
So Lauren, if I could just ask you to, to elaborate on a piece, there's so much conversation about screen time with little children. So if you could talk about that a little bit more, I think that would be really helpful.
So we use the iPads in a variety of ways at GLP. So we have digital books on there, we have digital libraries. So instead of us purchasing 5,000 titles, which Mrs. Feldman would be glad that we're not, we have 5,000 titles via the iPad. It's significantly less expensive and our students have access through them, through their iPad. So it's no different than people who read on a Kindle. Our teachers can truly multiply themselves because they may have five students working on iPads in the corner, they're working with a group of students, but they can respond to students via the iPad at the same time. So they're almost multiplying themselves as teachers. As you can see, students are able to video themselves for presentations, they can edit them. I often get students who are reading into the iPad for fluency practice and their, their goal is to hear themselves read back and they're able to self-correct. They can listen for, the ability to see, are my words fluid? Am I reading for punctuation? Do I have the ability to stop at periods and all those things? So they're able to self-correct for fluency. And those are just a couple ways that we use the iPads. We also have outstanding applications we've been able to purchase with the help of Mrs. Karstedt that are all academic applications. So they're practicing math facts, they're doing problem solving, they're building sight words. And it truly, that's the screen time that we would think about, screen time in a variety of ways. Are they on the iPads all day long? Absolutely not. Are they doing paper and pencil work? Are they reading with the teacher? Do we have movement in the classroom? I invite anybody to come into GLP and see the variety of activities we do. Many of you have students in the GLP. So it's a piece of the puzzle, but it truly is making our students 21, 21st century learners and they're, they truly are making a difference. And we hear the saying that if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always gotten. We're not doing what we've always done and we are truly not getting what we've always gotten. We're seeing it in our data, in our daily data, our scores are going up, we're seeing it in our New York State assessments. There are some of the highest scores I've seen this year that we got in 16 years, or some of the highest, which I've truly celebrated with the teachers in my building because of the change in practice they've made. We are having great gains in whatever our students are accomplishing. And that technology is one piece of it. Personalized learning's another piece of it. The ability to have rigorous classrooms and higher expectations for students is another. That little girl has made a tremendous amount of growth this year because of the instruction she has had. Thanks.
Item 4A, are there any requests to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? No, moving on. Approval of the consent, uh, uh-oh, sorry. Approval of the consent agenda items that upon the recommendation of the superintendent consensus, consensus items A through U be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Um, this is item 5A, the public comment. Um, this is the time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce. There is a two-minute time limit. Anybody? Okay, moving on.
No, no, I see a lot of government students here tonight.
None of them want to talk?
They waited to the end of the year.
Item 6A, resignation. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of special education teacher Amy Stager be accepted effective June 30th, 2019. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Stager for her 10 years of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
Mrs. Stager is here, I see her way in the back. I almost didn't see her. Amy, you will be an incredible loss to this district. There is no one that would say otherwise at all, but we are so excited for you. Amy moves on to be an assistant principal in the Amherst School District. With school?
Windermere Boulevard.
At Windermere? And if I correct, you can correct me here, I think there are 26 languages spoken at Windermere, am I right? Oh, is that in?
Something like that, yeah. Students from 30 different countries.
30 different countries worth of students. And so her background in curriculum and instruction and personalized learning and just so, and being able to coach and mentor other teachers is, is why they picked her up and they recognized that she's just a special teacher, so, and administrator. So Amy will miss you. They are lucky to have you.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Uh, item 7A, new business. Oh, there are the appointment guidelines, I'm assuming they're up there, right? Okay, moving on to the tenure appointments. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Peter Griesinger be granted tenure as a music, music teacher, effective August 31st, 2019.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C, permanent appointment, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Devin Stevens be permanently appointed as a cleaner effective June 19th, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Darren Azarelle be permanently appointed as a laborer effective June 19th, 2019.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Samantha Taggart be appointed as a teacher aide effective June 5th, 2019.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item F, elementary teacher, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kelly Grimaldi, who is professionally certified in childhood education, B through 2 and 1 through 6, literacy B through 6, and students with disabilities, B through 2 and 1 through 6, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area for a period commencing September 1st, 2019 and ending on August 31st, 2022 unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional, only except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section 312 of the education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to section 32, 312D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least two of the three preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at the time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master's step eight.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
So I'd just like to note for the Board of Education that this is a three-year term, not a four. She's been a special education teacher for us for the past eight years. It's been a dream of hers to work at third grade and so she's waited, not so patiently, for a third grade position to promote, but it's here for her now. And we're excited. She went higher screening process, just as if she were an external candidate, all the way up through her final interview with me. And I would tell you that she was solidly the top candidate regardless of whether people knew of her or not.
That's wonderful.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Welcome, Kelly.
Uh, item G, increase FTEs, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, science teacher Phil Archibald and German teacher Kirsten Krinnenby increase to 1.0 FTE effective September 1, 2019.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Just for conversation for the board, these two teachers have been full-time in the past and during our budget challenges a number of years ago, or enrollment challenges in the terms of Kirsten Krinnen, both of their positions were cut. Kirsten Krinnen goes from a 0.83 up to a 1.0, which means that she is now going to begin a new seventh grade, German, and be able to follow that all the way through her senior, through their senior year. And Phil Archibald is, has slowly been increasing as the years have come through and next year we'll go back to a 1.0 to help out with some of our special education students.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item H, special education summer school appointments, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed for special education summer school, effective July 8th through August 16th, 2019. Positions are listed 1 through 22.
Second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item I, summer transportation appointments, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed for summer transportation positions, effective July 1 through August 31st, 2019, drivers listed number 1 through 14. 18? Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Do you want me to restate it or no?
No.
Oh, okay.
Any comments or questions?
All in favor? Took your job.
Two months too early. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Sorry, I'm all confused. Shocking. Item J, a data protection officer, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Lucinda Karstedt be appointed as the data protection officer for the district, effective May 16th, 2019 and ending June 30th, 2019.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Yep, so comments from me for the Board of Education is that you may remember a number of years back when, um, a database dashboard was attempted to be created through a foundation to upload student information that parents could access and it didn't go well. Uh, there was a number of concerns by, um, school districts and parents about the privacy of that information and it not being hacked. Um, after a number of years of seeing just about everything hacked, you can come back at that and say, you know, it was a pretty good idea that they stopped that. What they did do at the time though is they created a committee to, um, explore what would be necessary in order to move forward. And it was a pretty lengthy committee. Lucinda's certainly much more articulate. And maybe at some meeting, Lucinda, you would come forward and talk to the board about that. Um, but right now, what we know is, is that when we accept or bring to the Board of Education a contract, a, a new software, something that requires us to upload student information, Lucinda and our attorneys are going through that with a fine-tooth comb to ensure the safety and privacy of our student information. Uh, so every contract right now is going through our attorney, we talked about this last month. We've put two on hold. I think where it's the biggest concern for us and the biggest piece is that free software is out there, but we have to do exactly the same thing with all the free software. And so since it's just starting up, it's not so easy right now. This puts Lucinda in charge of her 102nd responsibility in the district, which is to double-check everything that happens, grant or otherwise, to ensure our students' safety for privacy. And so I thank you for taking that on, Lucinda, but there really isn't anyone else that could do it the way she does, knowing technology.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Moving on to item 8A, excess books, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of books that are no longer usable be accessed from the Eden Library and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second. Any questions or comments?
I'm not sure I understand.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
One hit after the other. Alright, item 8B, that Bosse's, Bosse's joint bidding, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached resolution be approved, authorizing Eden Central School District to participate with other school districts and Erie to Bosse's in the joint bidding of items listed in the attachment.
Second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C, authorize superintendent to approve resignations prior to board approval at a subsequent meeting. That their superintendent be authorized to accept resignations prior to the board approval at a subsequent meeting.
Second. Second.
I don't know what's going on.
Any questions or comments?
Let me try to catch up here. So what happens now is an employee will submit their letter of resignation effective a particular date and then it may be three or four weeks before the board gets together again. We've accepted those resignations as the date that's on the letter, but honestly, the more appropriate way is for me to either have your authority to accept them on that date or for that effective date to be the next board meeting. So, um, this makes more sense than having somebody have to wait for three or four weeks to know that their resignation is approved, like Amy Stager. Paul said he wasn't going to take it, she left though, so it's too late for you now. But, so I appreciate you considering this one because I think it makes it easier and cleaner for our auditors too.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D, leased buses, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the school buses with drivers be leased to the Town of Eden Rec Department for their summer rec program, July 1 through August 31st, 2019, dates and times to be determined, and to St. John's, St. John's Eden Community Care Summer Friday Field Trips on a July 11th, 19th, 26th, and August 2nd and 9th, 2019.
Second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E, code of conduct, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the code of conduct for the 2019-20 school year be approved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Okay, that brings us to information and proposals and item A, the business report.
So what I wanted to inform the board, we're going out to bond for our current capital project, which means that instead of using short-term, one-year financing, we go to a 12-year bond or full mortgage payment. So in that process, we are sending information to Moody's and they rate us so that we, the bond investors can determine what sort of interest rate to charge us for the funds that we're buying. The higher the rating, the lower the interest. I'm proud to announce that we have a double-A rating from Moody's as of Monday, with them saying that we are in excellent, fiscally strong state. So that was good news for us, for our bonding. Yes, it's the same rating as we had last time, so we've managed to sustain even though not all districts maintain their status every time.
What sort of things could bring the rating down?
Some of the things that could be bringing our rating down are loss in property values, which is outside of our control. So, and if properties started to sell for less than people had bought them for. It also, negative votes, subsequent negative votes year after year, that erodes investors' confidence in the district's ability to maintain funding. It also could go down because if we didn't have the reserve levels and we started to deficit spend, those would also be a negative impact on our bond ratings. Some of the things that were good impacts were, we have a reserve policy and it's updated annually, so that helps us be fiscally stronger because then they can see that the board is not just hitting and missing on targets, but they're actually planning for futures to keep us at a stable level, which gives confidence to the investors. The other thing I'm sad to report is that Monday morning, and I'm not as sad as the girls in the bus garage office, their furnace decided to die on Monday. So they had no heat Monday and Tuesday and today. A new boiler was put into the district bus garage. And if we want to talk at this budget time about having expenditures happen that you didn't plan, when we did our budget almost 18 months ago for now, we did not plan on this boiler to fail. And so we had a replacement, a $3,100 replacement of the boiler. And hopefully, we won't need to turn it back on again until fall, but I got a feeling that's not going to be the case. We know it works and I'm assuming there's a warranty on it as well.
Alright, Sandy, the superintendent's report.
First, I'd like to welcome Senator Galvin's office for being here in Hamburg, son of course always. Ellen Silver in the back, if you could just wave. Ellen is one of our board candidates up for election this year. Uh, Tim Slade, section 6 in the back. Tim, if you could just wave. Thank you, okay. Matt Ghul, I'd like to put a shout-out to you for the musical and for helping us with the curtains for, um, the auditorium, so thank you for that as well. Congratulations to our top three graduating seniors. Angelia, whom no one knows, over here on my left, could you raise your hands, everybody knows, number one in her class. Congratulations, Angelia. Emily Nelson, number two, and Zachary Broznik, number three. All three of them will be honored tomorrow night at this Galactic Recognition Achievement Dinner. Barb Thomas Sulo is on the board for that. Ellen Kindley is going. Mark Shipish, our high school principal, and I will attend with you. It's a wonderful, wonderful event at Salvatore's. And so again, congratulations and if you could congratulate the other two as well. And just because you're the only one here, what's your average again?
Um, don't quote me on this, but I think my average is like a 99.2.
99.2, okay. There's probably a hundredth decimal in there too. The next thing that I'd, I'd like to bring up, um, Tim Slade, I'm not sure if there's something that you would like to add to this, but I still do appreciate you coming, is Marissa Felacaro, who rushed here from Holland, and of course I didn't know she was here because she snuck in, so I'm texting her, like, we're moving fast here, Marissa, we're going to do it without you. Um, Marissa was honored today at the section meeting for receiving the chapter six, New York State Athletic.
State Athletic Administrator, in honor for the section, or Chapter 6 Athletic Administrator of the Year. This is an incredible honor for Marissa. As you know, Chapter 6, Section 6, ECIC, and then our local districts all work together. Marissa's dedication to her local district is all, as well as to Section 6 and ECIC is certainly noted, and as I've shared before, is that all of these principal associations and athletic associations and superintendent associations and teacher associations only work because of us. There are no extra people to do those, and so every district is compelled to have people who are willing to go above and beyond to do that. So, Marissa, we're super proud for you. Okay? And Tim, would you like to say anything about Marissa?
Sure. We'll make her come up here.
Yep, and you have to speak to the mic so we can record it. Okay. Tim Slade is the executive director for Section 6.
Thank you, Sandy, and Board of Education, for the opportunity to come here this evening to your meeting to recognize Marissa.
If you could just move the mic up a little bit, you're tall.
Getting yelled at by the superintendent. Marissa is an outstanding leader, and we're glad that Eden and the Board of Education allows her to participate at the league level, which is the ECIC, which I do not oversee, but Section 6 and New York State Public High School Athletic Association. Just to give you some background on Chapter 6, we have 106 high schools in Section 6. There's 783 high schools in New York State Public High School Athletic Association. She is one of 11 that was recognized in Saratoga. Those are great, those are great numbers and something for her to be very proud of. She sits on ECIC, your league, she represents Eden at your league, she's on the activity boards, she's instrumental, along with Sandy, probably Eden, leading the way on creating an executive director position for the ECIC, the league, and they need it tremendously. I really shouldn't say that, but my observation, they need it, and they brought it to the forefront, and they're going to be interviewing soon. At the section level, she sits on the softball committee, girls' basketball committee, she sits on her athletic council as the girls' female, as the girls' female rep. At the state level, Marissa is the female rep to Section 6. She was also chosen at the state level to sit on two committees that each section is not represented. She was chosen, handpicked by the president of New York State Public High School Athletic Association, that's the compensation committee, and the handbook committee. The handbook is the bible of everything that we have to abide by within the regulations set forth by New York State Public High School Athletic Association, and as well as Commissioner Ilya in the State Education Department. She's emerging as a leader. We certainly appreciate Eden allowing her to do this, and hopefully, she will continue to grow and continue to make Section 6, ECIC, and the state association better for her work and Sandy's work as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Slade.
If I could just add something, to add to this, aside from the teachers at the Eden Central School District, Marissa was, single-handedly helped my youngest niece graduate from high school, and good news is she's graduating from college on Saturday. Thank you, Marissa.
Oh, it's back to me, all right. The next one I'd like to ask the board is to, for a change in date of the reorganization meeting, from Monday, July 1 to Tuesday, July 2. If you could just take a moment to look at your calendars and see if this would work out for you. As you know, that reorg meeting is the first meeting of the 1920s school year. Paul, you don't have to look.
I can.
You looked anyways?
I did.
Okay, I like that, though, that's all right. You can sit in the audience every time.
No.
He's not seeing, he knows he's not ready. There are a few of us that are not available on Monday night. Does anybody have a problem with that Tuesday night, July 2?
No, I don't think so.
All right, so I'd make that official. Reorg meeting is Tuesday, July 2. I think, Lucinda, this might be a good time for us to try to do the website, and what we didn't do, but we might as well show it, on here, we could show Facebook, like you could highlight where it is on Facebook for Marissa, that might be a good idea. There she is. So at the bottom, let's go back up to the top, if you don't mind, Marissa, I mean, Lucinda. All right, so Lucinda and her team worked really hard to upgrade our website. We had a number of comments last year that our website was really difficult to maneuver. We also are under some pretty decent challenges to become ADA compliant, and so this is the first step in that. It's also the first step in Eden Schools getting a mobile app, although I have to tell you that this website looks really good on your phone. So what Lucinda is showing you, if you go back up to the top, Lucinda, is when you open it up, you would see a video if you choose to watch it. There's an exclamation point on the bottom right-hand side, that's an alert that will pop up if there's something we really want you to know about. All you got to do is say, "Okay, I got it," or you could click on the link if you chose to. You have to scroll down, though, so this is one of those where you have to keep going. And what you'll start to see here is that we have larger icons, just in case you like pictures rather than words, these are our headlines. So for the budget information, budget vote is here. If you keep on scrolling down from me, Lucinda, the fitness center, times are here, rates for substitutes, this is everything that was on our original website, but there were only words and no pictures. And if you continue to scroll down, then you can see upcoming events, that was on our old website up on the top right. And then at the very bottom, you can see that there's a feed for Twitter, so you don't have to have your own Twitter account. And then there's also a live feed down here for Facebook as well. Announcements are also here. Lucinda, is there anything else that would be good to highlight?
Delay on my mic. Yeah, the site shortcuts used to be what was all down the left side, it's all here, it's just now on a tab at the bottom of the webpage. Also, all the legal notices that were required to put up on our webpage are now on a separate tab, instead of filling up the corner of our, bottom of our website. And then on the, this is, this is actually showing you the mobile version right now because it's scaling to this smaller screen, so this is what it looks like on the mobile. If you go on your computers, it's a little bigger. And then the very bottom is our, is our Facebook, and then our contact information.
And then if you could go to the bottom right where it says stay connected, this is where your feeds are. So if you don't have Facebook, don't have Twitter, don't have Instagram, you don't have to have those accounts, you can get it through us. And they aren't always all the same, because I, I try to manage the Twitter and the Instagram. Instagram won't take everything that Twitter or Facebook will put on there. I want to thank you and your team, Lucinda, for doing all this work. I can't even imagine what a bear this was. The next step for Lucinda and her team is to make this ADA compliant for visual and hearing impaired, complying with regulations. I'm sure that that's a really big step, too.
And just so, as board members, you might be asked, we are now compliant as far as our template. What we now need to dig is a really fine-tooth comb to our content. So that's where we'll be contacting to the different people that post things on our page, that we need to make changes, size of font, colors of font, some of the things that are up there need to be removed, so, or updated.
And I know Angelia made a really nice comment earlier, so while the face, while it's up here, the website, if there's anything you want to talk about, or Caroline, from a student perspective, that'd be awesome.
It's really easy to maneuver on your phone. I was using it this morning. Before, when you would go on your phone, it wouldn't scale it to your phone, but now you can just find the tabs easier, so that's really nice.
I like at the bottom of it how you can see, like, the Twitter and the Facebook and everything, especially for people who don't have it and want to stay connected with, like, online events and everything. I think that's really cool for parents who aren't into that stuff. But I also like how we went ahead and just, like, modernized it, because the old one was, like, old, now this one's, like, new, so.
The old was static, and the new has some movement, right? And Angelia is working with me for next year, even though she's graduating, to help me create a student team that will help us push more communications out to the newspapers and to social media, which, which would be great, would be a lot of fun.
Lucinda, I got a question for you. How easy is it going to be for the teachers to go in and edit their, their pages off this new site?
It's, it's the same as what it was, it's just a new format. I'm going to be offering sessions this summer with Randy Pearson, if they want some additional help, but I had a teacher stop down this mo, today for the Powderpuff game, which I just put on there. I gave her literally two minutes, the difference between what it used to be and what it is now. So it's, it's very quick and easy if they're, if they've been consistently upgrading their page. If they haven't touched it in a while, they might need a little refresher.
Well, that's content.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Yep, moving on to the student report. Okay, so hello, everybody. So Student Council was planning to do a field trip to Sky High on June 7, the same day of the Powderpuff game, and we talked, we talked it through Shibish and Servoni and everyone else except the Board of Education, so I just wanted to, like, know your thoughts and opinions on it. Yeah?
Do they know what Sky High is?
Oh, Sky High is, it's kind of like an adventure park. Basically, you climb obstacle courses and do zip lines, and it's like a team bonding thing, team bonding thing.
We're spec-
And it's a lot of fun, yeah. It's in Ellicottville.
Ellicottville?
Yes. And PTA's behind us already, I talked to Ms. Grunder and everyone else there, so I just wanted to run that past you guys.
So they're changing the date? Do we need, like-
Are you doing the zip line, too?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's the best part, at the end, there's like this huge zip line.
You have, in order to get through the obstacle course, you have to do the, you have to do the zip line, too?
I watched a mom with her child beg him for 30 minutes to go, crying, tears, "So you better have a plan in case somebody can't finish the obstacle course," because Mr. Soffin says, "You have to zip line to get to the end."
Yeah, I mean, it's all about conquering your fears, too, and we'll have our friends with us to help us with that, but like, I wasn't sure the process, because it's not an overnight field trip, I wasn't sure if we needed, like, approval or not, so that's why I'm just bringing it up really quick.
There are several of these across the state, and my family has participated in some of the ones up by Lake George, and they're a great deal of fun, and they're very challenging, too. If you're not in shape, you know it real, real quick. So good luck, I think it's a, I think it's a phenomenal thing to do.
It's not an overnight, so you don't need the board approval for that, but thank you for asking.
Mr. Shibish just wanted me to, like, tell you guys, so I did.
Thank you.
Okay, back on the-
As long as you bring everyone home.
We will.
Okay.
We will. All right, back on the regular agenda. So this Friday, we have a unit's blood drive, and all of the slots are pretty much filled. Everyone's really excited to get going on that, so that's something new. I've been working really, really, really hard on a Powderpuff game for June 7, and we're dedicating all the proceeds to pediatric cancer. We all know people have been affected by cancer, and especially some of our classmates have, so we wanted to do something really special for them. Game time's approximately 6:00 PM, so if you guys want to come out and watch, that'd be awesome. Ms. Roberts has been helping a lot with t-shirts and sales like that, and we're trying to get practices going for the girls and for the guy cheerleaders, who are thrilled to be cheering for us, but we're also sending out a very generic letter to businesses asking for sponsorship, saying if you want to sponsor a touchdown or, like, halftime, that's also an option for them. Oh, you can also view the t-shirts if you wish, there's a shirt form right by Ms. Lucinda, it's right there, yep. So those are the designs of the t-shirts that we're selling, that's the front, and then on the back-
This is the design of the shirt?
The design of the shirt, yes. Angelia and I worked on that, but we're selling the black ones for everybody, it's going to be $15 to $20, and all the proceeds are going straight to pediatric cancer. And then that's the back of them. And then the players, the seniors are going to have yellow ones, and the juniors are going to have purple ones.
Caroline, can I ask you a question? Do you have a possible rain date?
You know, no, we're just going to play in the rain, honestly.
No, there's some other conflicts that may be happening that day.
Oh.
On June 7, we would-
June 7.
I cleared it with Falco this morning.
States for lacrosse. Cortland, Friday and Saturday.
Isn't June 7?
Just saying, there could be a possible conflict.
If we, if we had to look, we had different dates, though. Okay. We will make sure there's different, we will work on that.
If it's an issue, then we can always look through-
Just saying, there'd be quite a few girls missing.
Right.
It'd be pretty awesome to take the shirt and frame it and put it up at the high school each year.
Yeah, that'd be really cool.
Because you have a really cool theme every year.
Yeah, but if it is a conflict, we can always-
We'll, we'll check that out.
We will, okay. We'll look into that, thank you for bringing it to our attention, though.
Thank you, Mr. Soffin.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Good luck to lacrosse, though.
Okay, so moving on, junior prom is this weekend, I'm not a junior, but it sounds exciting for everybody, and everyone's really excited to go. And senior prom is June 14, and it is at Kotekes, and Angelia and I are on prom committee, and we've been working hard to get everything all together, and it's just been a lot of fun, and we're excited, so. I'm going to give it to Angelia now. Okay, so the biggest thing I think I have is Raiders Respond Day. We've been very fortunate this year that Mrs. Gaglion and Mrs. Grunder have taken it over with the PTA, and it's going to be a district-wide now, so all grades will have some sort of project. So that's awesome. Thank you so much to Mrs. Grunder and Mrs. Gaglion, I know how much work you have put into that, that is amazing, that you have every kid doing an activity. So grades 6 through 8 are staying in the classroom, and they will be assigned a project by homeroom, and then grades 9 through 12, this week, we've been having kids sign up in homeroom for projects. 9 and 10 will stay within walking distance from the school, and then 11th and 12th have the privilege of going outside of the school to do projects. So that is awesome for Raiders Respond. We are also selling Raider Pride t-shirts during lunches for $5 through Student Council and the PTA, and all proceeds will go back to Raiders Respond. We also have our graduation walk through the GLP in elementary. We're trying to set up a date right now that doesn't conflict with our graduation practice, but we will eventually, and exams, that will conflict with exams, but we will walk through the GLP and the elementary in our caps, and they make, like, signs for us, and it's very cute. So we're excited about that. And then on June 13, we have a student versus faculty kickball game that we're setting up this year, so teachers can sign up to play kickball against the seniors, so I think that'll be really fun, too.
Those sound awesome, thank you so much. And so, just to clarify, you're going to try to get GLP in elementary on the same day for the walk?
Yeah, we walk through both buildings at once.
And is it the day that you get the gowns and the caps?
I think it's a few days after, because we get them on the first graduation practice, and then we do it on the second, but we're trying to work out dates, still.
Because I know they come in super wrinkled, but having the caps would be cool.
Yeah, I was talking, yeah, I was talking to Mr. Shibish about it, they used to do it, it would be graduation rehearsal, and then the walkthrough, but we never have, yeah, we cannot give an estimate time to the GLP and the elementary of when we'll be there, and then we come all wrinkly, and it just doesn't work out, so we were thinking about-
I know last year, things, the practice took longer.
Yeah. It just depends on the year and the speeches and stuff, but I know we were talking about doing it possibly the week before, but we just have to clear it with teachers, with exams and everything, or just set up a date afterwards.
And have your caps.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Cool, good. Let's make sure we get some video, okay? Okay.
Okay, now time for the board report and roundtable. Anybody have anything?
Anything for the board?
Okay. We're going to move on, the future date, the next Board of Education, regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, June 19, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. I feel like we didn't talk about the budget vote coming up, did we? Did we say the date anywhere? The budget vote?
No. Yeah.
Yeah, so just to remind those of you who are here, next Tuesday is the Board of Education Budget Vote, where you'll be voting on two propositions, correct? One is the actual, well, Laura, you could say, three, oh, there's three.
There's three. The first one is to expend $31,353,121. The second one is to purchase buses and maintenance equipment. The third is to establish a technology reserve, so if there's any excess funds, they can put away, be put away to replace items bought under the Smart Schools bond.
Hold one second. Lucinda, if you back up, or will, and you go to the link prior to the one you were just on?
So, yep.
Let's show the audience, that one right there, okay? Now, if you'd start over, if you don't mind, Laura.
All right, but I don't see that one. No, because I'm not on that Zoom.
So she's not anything you want. This is simple.
So what we did was we put out simple language, because I can describe in a couple of sentences what we're doing, and a lawyer can describe it in a couple of pages. what we're doing and a lawyer can describe it in a couple of pages. So we went through and we said, okay, the first proposition is how much can we expend? That's the full amount of the budget. The second proposition is to purchase buses and to purchase maintenance equipment. The third proposition is to grade a technology reserve to save money to pay for replacement of technology devices, specifically, we're thinking those that were bought by Smart Schools Bond and anything else that the district owns to kind of keep things going level going forward. And then the last one is the board members, the three board members that are running. And I'm sad to say, Paul Shepard won't be on that this time, so.
And so if, Lucinda, again, if you could back up and actually show them the, the full language of the propositions, because what we just did is not the legal language at all, but it was asked at the budget hearing that we provide simple language, so we've done that.
And as you can see, the lawyer is much wordier than the accountant.
And then, Lucinda, if you back up again, the next link should take you to the frequently asked questions. They may have been asked only once, that's frequent enough for us. When we get a new lot, we'll have a new lot of them tomorrow, because we had some conversations today. We'll put them up there and date them as of 5:16, but these are questions or clarifications that have been asked to us. And then the fourth link, also on the same site that Lucinda's scrolling on, our website, is the budget mailer that everyone in the district should have received. We do have extras at every single building if, in fact, someone does not have one for some reason. Okay, so that budget vote is next Tuesday, 9 to 9?
9 to 9.
9 to 9, and then in the middle school, high school auditorium foyer area. And school's closed for the kids next week. It's a staff development day on May 21. No school for students unless they are out of district. Okay, so I may, we are making a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.